...development. As Joe mentioned, with the new age-restricted use, we're probably expecting about half at most of the previous traffic. So that would imply that the adequacy of gaps in traffic on 413 should be okay.
Okay. And just refresh me. So when you're doing the all-access entranceway, when you're leaving, is it going to be a double lane, one for left-hand and one for right-hand?
It'll be a single lane.
It's going to be a single lane? Okay. Thank you.
I have just one last question, sorry, if that's okay. Can you flip back to the original submission? Yeah, that one. Okay. And then can you flip back to the color-rendered one? And so all the green that we see here, this is all going to be protected under conservation for perpetuity? Could it ever be sold or developed?
Do you want to take this? Yeah.
So the land on the right side of the plan will be subject to a conservation easement that will be granted to Bucks County. All that will be deed-restricted and preserved. The family asked for the ability to build two homes on that land as part of their homestead there. The Stone family, they're retaining those rights. Where those homes ultimately are located will be a future discussion between the township and the Stones, but they can build up to two homes on that side of the property. The rest of it will be deed-restricted pursuant to a covenant with the township. There'll be a note on the record plan. I suspect Jim will want a separate declaration that is recorded against the land to forever preserve that in perpetuity and limit what could be taking place on there, things like stormwater controls and walking trails would be permissible, potentially bird watching, some benches, that type of thing, but it would be very limited on the activities that could ever take place there.
Any other board questions? All right, we will move on to public questions. First one is James Flynn, 258 Aspen Avenue. Mr. Flynn? All right, we'll move on to Pat Thomas, 232 South Clearview Avenue. You don't want to make a comment? Okay. Next is Jane or Susan, Tomo, 1337 Roland Road. Same thing? All right. The next one is Eric Nordberg, 122 Granite Hill Court. Please come up and to the microphone.
Name is Eric Nordberg, 122 Granite Hill Court.
Can you just stand a little closer to the microphone?
Eric Nordberg, 122 Granite Hill Court. I guess my biggest question, is the original plan now completely out? Or is that pending? Is this is an alternate plan? And the first development area is gone?
The first plan that was originally denied is not on the table right now. This is a new plan as part of a settlement with their appeal of our decision.
If I can just clarify that, though. I apologize for interrupting you, sir. The prior plan is still in litigation. And, you know, so depending on, this is a proposal for settlement of that litigation that would get rid of that old plan, but if this doesn't move forward, that old plan is still in litigation, would proceed with the litigation and be determined on the outcome of that.
So this is just Plan A versus Plan B?
Correct.
So we don't know right now where we're going on this thing. So we're just, this is a just happy meeting, so we all be happy.
Correct.
Now, the two areas on to the right of the plan they had there would be to the east side. Are they going to be dedicated so they can't build more than two houses on that thing?
Yes, that's what Mr. Gunlock just said. Ms. Strauss asked him that question. On the right, the far right, where you have the two squares, Mr. Gunlock said that them two squares will be houses for the Stone family that will be built.
So there's...
But other than that, there's nothing else. The county will be purchasing the whole right side of it, if I heard him correctly. And then the left side, out by 413, will be preserved and nothing will be built there.
Okay. So I guess the bottom line is until we find out where the court case ends up, we'll still be another meeting here, then?
Well, we're having a meeting on Monday, and I believe they'll be doing the same type of presentation that they're doing tonight for any resident that doesn't come tonight or is not on Zoom tonight.
Okay.
But it'll be pretty much the same presentation on Monday night.
Okay.
Our plan on Monday night is to go and land out, and people look at it, and be able to go online and ask the question like any other person.
Are you going to make a statement regarding the deduction of traffic? Because you're assuming age-restricted?
Can, hold on. We need to have you come to the microphone and ask the question, so we can hear it, please. Sorry about that. I just want everybody to hear it, so that everybody's clear.
Yeah, I need to sign up, so I...
I'll give you a chance at the end, then.
Okay.
All right? Because I seen you with your hand up, so I'm not going to forget you.
Well, she was going to ask where the water come from this thing, so being she was asked, I'll let her present her case, then.
Okay.
I don't have any more questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nordberg. Next is Antonetta Milovich, 213 Adalane Place. And if I say your name wrong, please, I apologize, just so you know that.
Your question, answer it.
All right.
I actually have a couple of questions. Could you go into a little bit more detail about Road B? When you're coming out, when you're making that left-hand turn or the right-hand turn, you said you would be building some type of median in the center of the road, so people couldn't try to do the opposite? How long is that median going to be? And is it going to have any type of lighting so that the opposing cars can see what's going on?
Well, to answer the question, so the median that'll be built...
Yeah, please.
I apologize.
Yep.
I think I would have learned by now. The median that's proposed, as outlined by pendant requirements, will be a four-foot concrete median. It will not have lights, so to speak, on it, but it'll have signs with reflectors and pavement markings on either end. So the intent of the median is to cover the full mouth of the driveway and ensure that folks make right turns in and right turns out only, and it should prevent left turns in and left turns out from the driveway.
One of my other questions was, I'm assuming that this is going to be a gated community, not freely, free access for anyone to go in and out?
So just because we're, this is really a sketch plan, just to kind of get the idea. We haven't gone into that. I don't know from my expectation, was it going to be a gated community? So I'm trying to make the answer today, I'm saying probably not, unless it's...
Okay. And I know you did explain this already, that the open space is supposed to be until the end of time. But I just want to make sure, is that going to be put into the contract and into the declarations?
Mr. Morrissey, can you grab the microphone, so people can hear you?
You're all set.
You got it. So just to kind of answer that, the thought is the county would be buying this, and it would always be open space forever, other than the two single-family lots that the Stones would eventually build a house on, but the rest of it would all be, which is 33.527 acres. And then, is it 33 on both sides? So it's 33 on the top half, 33 in the bottom half. There's two technically sellers for Stone, each would get one lot. All the area in here, and the area up here, and then the 25 acres all through here, would be open space through the HOA, deed-restricted through the HOA, that could never be built on. So alls you would have in here is the 164 twins. Everything else would be open space. We would just have to confirm, once we go through the approvals with the township, of exactly what this would be. Like I said, some neighbors had some thoughts of what they thought it should be. The township, I'm sure, will have their ideas of what they'd want it to be. So we would just have to figure out what's best for everyone.
Okay. And what's the distance between the two roads leading out onto 413?
Eric, do you know off the top of your head? Eric's going to scale it real quick. What we tried to do is keep a similar road structure as we had with the single-family. The difference is, these units would sit on roughly 60 single-family home lots, just to kind of give you an idea, and then obviously everything to the side. 700 feet roughly from here to here.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Next is Dana Kane, 1532 Franklin Road.
I just wanted to, if you could put the back... My one big question is, again, I have the same concerns around the traffic. You know, I go in and out of Sturbridge and Hampton and Heaton Mill and Georgetown, and it is really tough to get out of those homes. And this in particular is right next to the bypass. It is right near Summit Trace. So again, I have those same concerns about traffic. My one concern also is, you know, it looks like we have the open space on 413, but we're not providing a big buffer for those homes that are on Summit Trace. It looks like those homes back up almost right to their backyards. So that's really a concern there as well. Again, it checks a lot of boxes, but I think there, you know, there is definitely, you know, some things around 413, open space versus, you know, open space buffer around, you know, the homes that are already there. Again, this is, you know, one of those things where it's going to make it a lot harder to get out of that Summit Trace road, with people only being able to, you know, make left-hand turns out of 1 to 413 on that Road A. So those are just my comments.
Next is Sharon Furlong, 133 East Bristol Road.
Sharon Furlong, 133 East Bristol Road. Spokesperson Bucks Environmental Action. I have two concerns.
Spokesperson for what?
Bucks Environmental Action. It's a local watchdog group of leaders in the environmental and social justice community. I have concerns about the conservation easement. Two concerns. One is that it's a, from what I understand, that land has a lot of water in it in the first place, and this is a flood zone area. And so therefore, it may be a conservation easement, but what you plant in there in order to take up stormwater and to prevent shearing of stormwater in the storms that are, we are now seeing on a regular basis from the climate change emergency. So planting grass, for instance, isn't necessarily a really good plant, using that as an example to suck up stormwater flow. So what you plant there, how you plant it, what the declination of the land is, and what you do with that, types of plants and shrubs, et cetera, is going to make a difference. The second is that conservation easements, when they were created some decades ago, were considered inviolable, and nobody could stop them. Nobody could break them, nobody could change them. That has been successfully relitigated and challenged in many places, especially on the east coast, and that is now a concern that is, that the environmental community has been looking at. So there are two major conservation easements now being considered for stormwater mitigation and to make this plan better for the community. And I'm concerned, and my colleagues will be concerned, if more of these torts work against breaking conservation easements. So therefore, sometime in the future, what has been touted for the community as a way of making this palatable and decent might get destroyed. And that's my concern. This is premature, nothing has been written up, but I just wanted to bring to the community's attention and to yours, that this is going on and has been going on recently. This is not a very old development concerning conservation easements. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Joe DeFinis, 1313 Tollgate Road.
Hi, I'm Joe DeFinis, 313 Tollgate Road. I've been there for 50 years. Looking at the houses is not like looking at cornfields, you know what I mean? But my question is, has anybody... Where's the sewage going? I know there's a main that runs through the farm, right along the creek, because my father was an engineer on that job, okay? And the last time I saw somebody open up the manhole, and I did, it was almost running at full capacity. So how big is that trunk line that runs down through there and goes to the Cork Creek Interceptor?
Well, everything we're designing is being worked with the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. We still have to go through the full planning module process, which is review and approved not only by the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, it will be by the township as well, and DEP. So we are connecting in 413 into the existing main that is in there. Our pipe will be eight inches. As for the pipe that is in 413, at this time, I don't know the exact size. I can look it up and report back.
I don't even know of any sewer pipe on 413.
Well, that would be... Oh, you know what? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
And here, it's through the middle of the site. I apologize. The septic system is down along the stream bank, so this is where we are connecting in the sewer.
I know it's there.
Yeah.
You know? Like I said, my father was an engineer on that, when they did that.
Okay.
Through Joe's place. But what I'm, my question is, the volume that's coming out of Summit Trace and Summit Square, how big is that turracotta pipe?
The existing one?
Yeah.
Again, I would have to report back. I don't remember at this time. It's been some time since we've actually looked at those details. It's been many years.
So let's say it's running 100%. Then what's going to happen with these houses?
Well, we would have to upgrade it. It won't be approved if it's already maxed out.
Okay.
And that's the truth. We would have to go through DEP.
You'd have to dig up that line, put a new line in and tie it into the Cork Creek Interceptor.
We would have to upgrade it all the way down if it was already at capacity.
That's a big job in itself, if you have to do it.
Oh, if we have to do it, yes.
You know? Dig through Tollgate Road. Because the interceptor's on the other side.
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's all I was interested in. If this, if that main was running 100% or that line running 100%, there's going to be, what, 164 homes dumping into it?
They said that they would make sure it isn't, and they would fix that. Is that something you just...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
It wouldn't pass, right? If it's running 100%, you said you would take care of that.
That is correct. They wouldn't approve it.
Okay.
So is it contingent on that? Is the whole plan contingent, or whether that could be not?
Let me just elaborate a little further. There is a very detailed planning module approval process when it comes to sewer. So when you're proposing sewer, you first have to produce letters of capacity from the sewer authority, that there's capacity in the lines and there's capacity at the plant. After those letters are reviewed and approved, the plans would be designed, they'd be reviewed by the township engineers, they'd be reviewed by the sewer authority engineers. When all those reviews are done, it then goes to the Department of Environmental Protection, who reviews it and approves the planning module or a planning module exemption in order to be allowed to connect into those sewer lines. So there is a, multi-parties that look at this and confirm that there's capacity. If there's not capacity in the lines that convey the sewage to the plant, then the lines would have to be upgraded. They'd have to be increased in size to handle that capacity, or they'd have to be sent a different route. If the plant doesn't have capacity, the plant would have to be upgraded. If any of the...
Do you know where the plant is?
I'm just giving you the overview.
No.
I understand, if there wasn't enough capacity, the plant would have to be upgraded. Upgrades can happen in the form of replacement of pumps, replacement of lines, a whole variety of factors. But we don't even get there until we start the design process. So we would do...
Wait, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Please, let him explain, please.
There's a whole process that...
We don't need people yelling, please.
There's a whole process we would need to go through. Again, we haven't started the process because we need to confirm the type of product it is that's being put there. I will tell you, and we're happy to share the statistics with you, that age-restricted residents without school-aged children use significantly less water and sewer facilities than conventional homes.
I'm 74, and I use the toilet all the time.
Okay. Happy to share with you, sir. I'm just conveying the information.
Thank you, Mr. Gunlock.
I'm going to sleep tonight, I'll be up at 2:00, 4:00, 6:00.
Mr. DeFinis, thank you for your comment, and thank you for your service. Next up is Susan Charles, 1210 Brownsville Road.
I have a concern. I've been at St. Mary's, working there for 27 years, and making a left out of that hospital every day at 3:30. It's really, I only live three miles away. It takes probably 20 minutes to a half hour to get home because of the traffic, and in a snowstorm, I've, it's taken me an hour and a half to get home. I don't think they're considering when the houses go up, the population goes up, and we're going to need traffic lights on that road, and it's just going to be a mess. Really, I, every day, I leave...
That was one of the issues in the first time that, when they were in front of us, was ambulance service and...
Yeah.
Fire rescue service going in and out of that place. I think what they're saying now is the traffic, this doesn't impact the traffic as much as the old plan.
But it will when these, if this, if this community goes up.
Okay.
And 55 communities are going up everywhere, like they've been going up. What are we doing for our kids? I'm very concerned for our kids.
Okay. Thank you. Next is Jill Weinberg, 1382 Newtown Langhorn Road.
Thank you. As a former resident of three active adult communities, I have two questions. The first question is, is there anything that will prevent the homeowners' association from saying, "This is our homeowner's land. We're not letting anyone walk on it." And that happened in all the three that I lived in.
We're not letting anymore what?
We're not letting anybody use the trails on our land.
Okay.
That's our land, we're not letting anybody use it. That happened in two states and three communities.
That was one of the reasons I asked that question, because I didn't know if the homeowners' association wouldn't allow people in there. I didn't know if it was going to be a gated community, and it sounds like you're not making a gated community. So it sounds like anyone could go in and out of there.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we're offering a public access easement over those trails as part of this project that would allow residents to use those trail system. Wouldn't allow them to use the clubhouse, but it would allow them to use the trails through the community. That would be offered as part of this.
And I'm not really familiar with homeowners' associations, so I'm not sure whether or not they can deny people from walking on them trails. So that I couldn't answer for you. I don't know if maybe one...
She is correct. If it's a private community and private trails and private roads, they can deny residents. But if we record against the trail system a public access easement in favor of the township, then the residents would be allowed to use that. Now, there could be reasonable restrictions, like they can't use it after sundown or, you know, late in the night, but certainly whatever regulations apply to use of township trails would apply to this as well.
Okay.
Thank you. The second question that I had about that was, every time I moved to a brand-new development, which was twice, the first thing everybody wanted to do was make a big patio, as big a patio as could possibly fit on the land that was their house and in that area. And that changes the, and I'm going to say the word wrong, that changes what happens to the rain that falls on the ground and where it drains. Will there be anything that keep those residents from having any kind of change?
Yeah, so very good question. What we do, and what we did at our Squires Ridge neighborhood in Lafayette Hill, we give the homeowners a limited common easement on the back of their property, which limits the size of either a patio or a deck. So in that neighborhood, they could go 14 feet back and 16 feet wide for a patio or a deck, depending on what they, what they want to do. So we would, we would limit that as well. Everything else would be controlled by the HOA, so someone couldn't go in with a larger patio.
Were those numbers, were those numbers put into the amount of paved...
Yeah, so that's all figured into our calculations for the stormwater. Yes, correct.
That's figured into that already.
Correct.
So if it stays as grass, not covered up...
It's even better.
It's a little bit, okay, thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you, Ms. Weinberg. Next public comment would be Jeff Miller.
Hi, I'm Jeff Miller. I live on 1567 Fooling Mill Road. I'm sure some of you are familiar with who I am. I represent a group of citizens in the area here, and I shouldn't say represent, we all represent, you know? We're all a big group. Unfortunately, I became sort of the spokesperson, but needless to say, I just want to do a couple clarifications here, just for layman's terms for a lot of the folks, first off, so there's a better understanding as to what thing, how things are transpiring here. I think it's... Oh, is that better? So I just want to bring people up to speed with where we've been and where we are. I'll make this very brief. So seven years ago, Metropolitan, somewhere in that vicinity, made an agreement with the Stone family to develop the farm. And you've seen roughly six iterations of different plans throughout all that time. And throughout the whole process, there was a lot of adversarial stuff going on, because, rightfully so. I mean, you know, we're the citizens of this area, we're the ones who experience all the traffic firsthand, we experience all the flooding firsthand, and there's, there's a lot of concessions that need to be made upfront if anything is ever to happen. So with that in mind, here we are, seven years later. Save Stone Meadows Farm, the group, was developed four years ago with certain members really spearheading that much sooner than I ever got involved, because I was one of the naysayers that said, "Nothing can be done." So here we are, flash forward, and just this past, well, let me just start that back again. So I want to talk about a lawsuit, which actually pertains to Middletown Township, and this is public information, where the developer didn't like the choosing of the Board of Supervisors' decision back in 2019. So it went to the Board of Appeals. I think that's the correct terminology. It was appealed. And that is just something that a developer can do, and they can continue doing that until all of time. So here we are, as Save Stone Meadows Farm Group, and we do what's called a petition to intervene. And what that means is myself and another member of our group sought out the fact that we didn't see that this plan represented our community. So that's why we got involved to the extent that we did, to which a lawsuit ensued. And there again, I won't go into details about that, because it's just one of the complicated measures of where we are and where we've been. And it's been a four-year... measures of where we are and where we've been, and it's been a four-year course for me. So, here we are, this past Wednesday. I receive an email from my attorney, and that Metropolitan and Fox Lane Homes has reached out and potentially wants to meet and have a discussion. So, I speak with our group, and I'm agreeable to meet, and to which I met with Joe Morsey here of Fox Lane Homes, as well as Mike Kezian at a meeting, and we discussed the plan at hand. So, obviously, we're looking for ways to mitigate what is gonna fit in our community, if anything. Well, certainly, we all know the answer to that, we don't want anything, because we have a lot of traffic. And that is the exact thing that we, as a group, all of us collectively, it is one person after another who says the same exact thing. It's traffic, traffic, traffic. It's the safety of the hospital. We've had professionals here. We've had a nurse here come to speak from the cardiology, who said that, you know, there are people, just like the gal back here, said that folks, it is a life and death thing. If an ambulance can't get down the road fast enough, or a nurse can't get down the road fast enough because their beeper goes off. However, that's where we are today, and that's how this whole plan came about. Because one of the things that I did see on Wednesday, that we hashed out over a two-hour meeting, which is really just an introductory look, these are ideas that Metropolitan is putting out, because they are looking for an alternative to what they proposed before. Do you mind if I get a drink, ma'am? My lips are sticking together, but... So, plus I'm nervous. So, again, I won't keep this too much longer. But what I could see is, you know, the word of that day were concessions. And the one thing that I could say is that our community has made a ton of concessions, right? I mean, we're here, we're listening, we've been through all these iterations through a seven-year course of time, and it wasn't always pleasant. I mean, Rob Gunlock got yelled at a lot. But honestly, you know, at this juncture, and, you know, this is not an end-all. This is just a preliminary for what the sentiment is of our area. There are certain things that, you know, we're attempting to do with all our might, you know? And, you know, there are certain things that developer, you know, literally has the right to do as well. But, you know, this is an agreement between us and them, and like, I don't want to make it adversarial anymore. I just don't. I just don't see the reason, I don't see the end game, to where we can potentially, you know, get to where we wanted to, you know? We...413 is a problem. It'll be a problem, we'll all be gone, and it'll be the next generation's problem. But, and there's not a darn thing any one of us can do about that. We can make deceleration lanes and everything else, but, you know, I just think there's room for compromise. But there again, this is not the end-all, this is not the give-up game. This is the point where we need to figure out where we are headed with this thing, you know? After me being in it four years, I don't know, you know? Everybody asks me for, "Where are we headed with this?" I don't know. I really, truly don't. Except for, I know there's a lawsuit, I know it's in an appeals court, this man wants to build houses, we want to preserve the whole land, we don't want more traffic, where do we go from here? So, that's pretty much all I have to say. Can I actually do one more thing? I want to see that picture of the farm, the color.
Which one?
The color rendition you have. Just a couple clarifications in layman's terms. So, this is a conservation easement, one and two. This will still belong to the family. Am I correct in saying that? The county will hold deed. Really? Okay.
Let me clarify, Jeff.
Why don't you please?
Thanks. The county is looking to purchase a conservation easement to protect and preserve it from being developed. They're not looking to take title to the property. If they took title, then they'd be responsible for maintaining and operating the property. They're not paying a price based upon fee interest, they're paying a price based upon a conservation easement. That conservation easement would be made available to you, Jeff, and everybody else that limits all the activities on the property, but you're correct.
So, what you're saying, it's a deed restriction for future building?
Correct. It's actually a conservation easement. It's like a deed that's granted to the county that starts by saying that no construction or subdivision of homes will be allowed on this property in perpetuity, except as follows, where it references those two spots.
But it's held as a private individual, which will be the Stone family, currently speaking.
The land is still owned by them, the conservation easement would be held by the county.
Understood.
The township could be made a third-party beneficiary of that as well, but the county's the one that's funding it and would hold it.
Got it.
Yeah.
So, just trying to make a clarification on that, because I think it's a little confusing. I think that's about all I have for right now, except for, let's see here in my notes. So, actually, the developer's done a couple of good things, and they've actually reacted to some of the things that we requested over the course of the years. First of all, we wanted as much open space as possible. So, you know, looking at the plan, it is actually a better plan than the original proposed. When I first saw this thing Wednesday, I go, "Oh, God, here we go," you know? But actually, after reviewing some of the notes, looking at the data, looking at everything, I kind of cooled off a little bit. I think there's probably room for a lot of improvement in a lot of ways, but, you know, I'm not gonna stand up here, and I'm not gonna put up a total roadblock in opposition. But like I said, this is not the end-all tonight. This is only a process for them to move to the next level, to potentially get a permit for the age restriction. We still have a problem with the traffic. There's one other thing, there's an expansion that's going to be happening at Penswood Village. So, Penswood Village is on the roster, and we also have expansion at St. Mary's. So, those are things to take into consideration with all the road traffic as well, and that just keeps pouring on 413 that we can do nothing with. So, that's all I've got, folks. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I have to tell you, when I first met you, you have a lot of passion, and you really believe in this, and just listening to you, and I guess the residents here have listened to you too, I appreciate what you said, and I appreciate the passion, and I appreciate everything that you've done for this farm so far. So, thank you. Next is Zach Silverston.
My name is Zach Silverton, I'm one of the attorneys that's been representing Save Stone Can you hear me now? My name is Zach Silverton, I'm one of the attorneys that's been representing Save Stone Meadow Farms. I think after Jeff's presentation, I wanted to just come up and clarify the position of the organization at this point in time. I think that, as Jeff said, we had some productive and positive conversations with Joe on Friday, my colleague Mike Peters. I think that at this point, as Jeff said, we've only had the plan in our hands since, I think about last Wednesday, maybe we received a little bit earlier than that, but last week, we've only had about a week to digest it. At this point, we're not ready to really make a formal...or take a formal position on whether we would support it or not, but I think that, you know, we're moving in the right direction, and hopefully, we can work with the developer to make this a better project for the community and something that's more palatable to the local residents. So, with that, I would just say that we're not necessarily waiving our ability to object to this in the future, but we are, we do feel like we're moving in a positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silverston. Ma'am, you wanted to say something?
Yeah.
Oh, behind you. And please state your name and your address, please.
Yeah, hi, my name is Jane Schwartz, and I live at 162 Meadow View Court in Summit Trace, and I've lived there since 1990, and I have been coming to all these meetings to see all the iterations of the plans, various plans. And the latest one, I find, Jeff talked about the need to review the data, and I'm really hoping that between now and the meeting next week, the builder can come up with more specific numbers as to how he concluded that an additional 41 houses is gonna result in a much less traffic impact. That's number one, I want to know those assumptions. And the second set of assumptions is, it's still a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath house. I know it's age-restricted, but you're gonna have a lot of people living in these houses. So, I think the assumption, there's a lot of assumptions made, that the utility usage is gonna be less, the traffic's gonna be less, all because it's age-restricted, and I want to know what those assumptions are, and I want to know how we can bear out those assumptions, prove that they're accurate, because the traffic situation on 413, as everyone has said, and everyone is horrendous today. We add 164 more houses, that's gonna roughly equate to what? 320 more people? 320 more cars? And we only have two roads, and we're not allowed to have a traffic light, because PennDOT says we don't have enough traffic? I don't know where that study came from, but all these facts need to be ferreted out before we can make an informed decision, I think. So, thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you.
I was just gonna add in, we'll happily share that with you, and I could send the info to Jeff ahead of time, so you have a chance to look at it before our meeting on Monday.
Somebody's behind you first.
Go ahead.
Please state your name and your address.
Sure, thank you. My name's Linda Mead, I'm at 325 Tollgate Road, and I want to take this opportunity, Supervisor Tosti, to thank you for your service to this community, and thank you for your vote on this plan at the previous plan.
Thank you.
So, there were a couple things that occurred to me in the process of the presentation. One thing that I think would be really helpful for the community is if the developer could put bright orange flags in the field at the location of where the two roads will go into the property, and also at the location of where the 25-acre boundary is. I think if that were there, that would give people the opportunity to take a look over the next month and get an understanding of what that would look like. Thank you. In terms of traffic, you know, I live on Tollgate, I make a left out of Tollgate, and one of the things that I notice is, when the light at Penswood stops cars coming one way, the light at St. Mary's has them coming forward. So, it becomes very difficult to make that left. Somebody's coming from the left, or they're coming from the right. So, I would just ask that the traffic lights could be timed appropriately, and that that would be part of this process, not asking for a new traffic light, but that traffic lights would be timed.
But that's the traffic light at Tollgate and St. Mary's?
There's a traffic light at Penswood.
Yeah.
So, it's just up from Tollgate.
Okay.
And then also at St. Mary.
And Ms. Mead, I'll say, our traffic engineer, Mr. Worsta, this timing traffic lights is like his favorite thing to do.
Fantastic.
So, he lives for this, absolutely.
Please fix that, that would be fantastic. Thank you. On the conservation easement on the back end of the property, just a question, because I was confused, I think, in this process. I fully understand conservation easements, I know those will be privately held by the family, with the easement held by the county, and hopefully the township is another party in that. At some point, I thought I heard that there would also be trails through there allowed? That didn't seem appropriate to me, no?
No trails there.
No trails. So, that, so just to be clear, that's not public park land or trail land, that's privately-owned, but permanently-protected land?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Street lighting, so I don't know if you've gotten to that point yet, but when you do a street lighting plan, I think what's very important is, because this is next to Core Creek Park, and this is an important bird habitat area, that any traffic...or any street lights are turned down, so you don't have light pollution in the sky. I don't know what the township ordinance is in this regard. And also, I would recommend that they be solar, so there's a lot of solar street lighting.
The plan was solar.
Good. Okay, excellent. Finally, landscaping, and I mentioned this when we met the other day, but native plants are really important. I don't know what the ordinance says, but having native plants that protect biodiversity, bird habitat, is really important versus having, you know, Japanese cherries and various beautiful things that don't provide the same nice habitat. So, I would recommend that any landscaping on the entire property, and most especially in the public areas, be done with native plants, and that the native habitat that was created at Penswood is a terrific habitat, and I would recommend that you look at that. So, those were my comments, and thank you very much.
Linda, I will say the same thing to you that I said to Mr. Miller. Thank you for all your work with this, and your dedication, and your belief in why it should be preserved.
Thank you so much.
So, I appreciate everything that you've done too.
Thank you.
We will allow two more speakers, because we are going to have a night next week that will have an open forum. So, I'll allow two more people to come up, and the reason I said two is, I know that I had two people with their hands up.
My name is Ann Pulis, and I live at 225 Green Valley Road. When I moved in and built that house, 413 never had traffic. There were no developments. It was us and one across the road. St. Mary's was this big. That was it, that's all we had, and I've watched one after another after another. We are starting to get flooded on a regular basis in a lot of the developed areas. The creek is right down the road. I'd like to know when the creek is going to be cleaned out. If you drive south on 413, there's a sofa in the trees, right below Bridgetown Pike, and more debris than that. There are doors and all kinds of things that came with the last storm that are still there. When the creek backs up, Green Valley is flooded. I'm sick of it. I'm sick of the building.
Thank you. Good.
Good evening. My name's Tom Piacentino, I live on Country Lane in the Millway Farms, which is where the conservation district's gonna be. Like, you talked about sewer earlier, capacity for that, so what about water? A lot of the people, including myself, that live in that area are on wells, and one of our biggest concerns is, you're gonna need water for this. What's gonna happen if you have to dig a well on the property? Sometimes we heard yes, sometimes we heard no in last meetings, or like possibly get an assurance that you're not gonna drill a well, and if you are gonna drill a well, that we'll get some kind of relief because of that.
We have a will-serv letter from Artesian, stating that they have the water available to serve us. As the same thing that we stated with the sewer, there is a review and permitting process to go through for that as we go through the development.
Can we get insurance from the builder that we're not gonna be drilling a well on that property?
The way the permit is issued is, well, that there's no...
There's no well for Artesian, in other words, they're not gonna put a little water plant there.
The plan is, right now, from Artesian, that they will not be...
They will not do it.
But it is, they are the water provider, and so we haven't at this point, wasn't a consideration.
I'm just saying, as we move forward, whether it's this plan or another plan, it's a major concern for a lot of us that live around that farm, that we end up with no water, then what do we do?
Yeah. What they've stated to us so far is that there will not be a well on there.
So, hopefully, we'll have that in your official papers in writing?
It's gonna be a permitting, we won't have that for Monday night's meeting.
I understand this is further down the road.
Yeah, so as we go...
I just wanna put it on the agenda now, so...
Yes. No, I understand, but as we go through the permitting and review process...
Thank you, and I'd like to echo everybody else, Tom. You did a great job while you were here, and I'm sure we'll see you again. Take care.
All right, I will, I was just notified that we have three people on Zoom who want to speak, so I will allow that, and then we will move on. And Mr. Esposito, I'll be looking for you for guidance on instructions on how to move forward.
Matt Brooks, you should be receiving an invitation to speak. Can you hear us, Matt?
It seems he's on mute. I don't know if it's on his end or our end.
All right, I'll bring in our next person, and see if we can get back to Matt. Can you hear us, Matt?
It seems he's on mute. I don't know if it's on his end or our end.
All right, I'll bring in our next person, and see if we can get back to Matt. Can you hear us, Susan?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
My name is Susan Hoskins, 992 Broadview Avenue. I have a couple of questions. One, are there any affordable units designated among these 123 units?
No.
It seems like a missed opportunity. And when you're calculating the AM and PM trips in and out of this development, how, what's the standard that you're using to estimate that? I hear that there must be some standard for age-restricted housing, but it seems to me that an awful lot of people between the ages of 55 and 75 are still working, and so it shouldn't be assumed that only 30 of, if there's 123 homes, let's say 200 residents, 30 seems like a low estimate for the number of people who would be going out to work. Also wondering whether either of these drives lines up with the George School Farm Drive, and whether there might be a different calculation of number of trips to qualify for a traffic light, if both the George School traffic and this development traffic were combined. And just a note, that the plantings in the Penswood Meadow were very intentionally planted for purpose, not for pretty. And we would hope the same thing would be true across the street. Thank you for your time.
I will try and answer those questions. I'll start with the last one first. The northernmost access driveway, which is our proposed, our access that's proposed for full access, is directly across from the George School driveway. The last time that the school driveway was counted, that also fell well below the threshold for signalization. The way PennDOT looks at it, they will look at the higher of the two side streets in order to determine whether a signal may be warranted. And I think, as I alluded to earlier, I don't, it's not really a decision of whether or not the applicant wants to put a traffic light in. Typically, traffic lights are a benefit to any development. However, in this case, we don't expect that PennDOT would allow the signal to go in. And that information has been submitted, and certainly can be resubmitted for the Township Engineers Review. With respect to the, to the trip generation, and what we expect to occur, the age-restricted communities that have been studied by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and that's the publication we use, so it's basically a compendium of national studies that are done of different types of land uses. Single-family homes was the original proposal. The age-restricted attached configuration that we're considering now is a completely different set of data. So when we do those calculations, it's, it's really not our assumptions, we're basing it upon the data that PennDOT refers to as the standard for estimating traffic generation. So we did submit that information, and certainly can provide adequate backup for the Township Engineers Review as well.
Do you have that for Monday?
Certainly.
Thank you. We have one more, Mr. Vella?
We have one more, our first one left. The last person will be coming in right now.
Hi, my name's Mike Mooney, I'm at 1607 Foley Mill. Question was, when, what were the notice criteria for any of this, for, for next Monday or any of these meetings?
I, I don't believe a notice went out. We were just notified of this tonight. Am I, am I correct, Mr. Gunlock?
Yes, that's correct. We asked to be on the agenda, and it's a good segment into why we're here. We're here to ask the board to formally allow us to deliver those public notices. That is mailing of notices, posting the property, putting it in legal notices for the 20th, so that we can formally come back and do this presentation, and continue to address questions. Between now and the 20th, we're having a neighbor meeting this Monday, and we'll be at the Township Planning Commission meeting in December. So tonight's the first step for the public notices.
To be clear, hold on, Mr. Mooney, let him finish, please. Go ahead.
So tonight is actually the first step to request that you authorize to allow those public notices to be disseminated. We did send, and this is a public meeting, we did send a notice to the township to include it on the agenda for this evening.
When was that sent?
That was sent, oh, Chairman.
Was what sent?
When was the notice sent, put on tonight's meeting, so that the community...
The notice to be on this agenda tonight.
I believe they met, what, was it last Wednesday?
They, they sent in their packet to us last Wednesday to try to address, informally, just to have a discussion tonight.
We got an email yesterday, that this meeting was tonight.
Well, the agenda, the, the, hold on, hold on, hold on, please. The agenda is, the agenda is posted on Fridays. So it, it's on our website.
In the area, or we didn't receive anything from the township.
Mr. Chairman, if I can clarify, that's why we're here tonight, to ask that we start the process with the public notice. So this isn't a hearing about this proposal. We gave an informal presentation to request that we start the public notice, so that we can mail everybody, including you, ma'am, the public notice, and get the process formally started at the 20th.
From my understanding, this presentation was for the board, and then they were going to do a separate presentation for the community. And I guess that's when the notice would have went out, that, that they were to open it up to the community, which would be next Monday night at 7:00, they said at the beginning of the meeting.
But now he's talking about something on the 20th, it sounds like he wants to bring it back.
The 20th is, December 20th is our board meeting, is what he's talking about.
He wants to bring it back to the board to vote on the 20th.
We want to bring it to the board to have the hearing, and to have the hearing, we need to send out the formal notices. So we're just asking tonight to let the process move forward. What the board does on the 20th is up to the board. Between now and then, we're going to show the plans, but we're asking that we allow this formal advertisement process, so we don't miss anybody, and include them and allow them to participate on the 20th.
I will say, on their behalf, is they are giving the opportunity for the community input, which we, we didn't get that the last time. So the community input would be for the Monday night, and that's when the notices will go out, for the Monday night meeting. If that makes sense to everybody.
No, it doesn't, I'm just confused, because they're trying to...
Please come to the mic so people, so that people on Zoom can hear you.
Yeah.
And on, and TV.
Yeah, I understand what the Monday night meeting's about, the 22nd. What I'm trying, what I'm now trying to figure out is, he wants to fast-track this, so they can have a quote-unquote "hearing" on the 20th, which would be December 20th, with the board. So my question is, what's going to take place at the hearing? If we're not voting on something, what exactly takes place at the hearing?
Mr. Esposito, you want to?
So what we're possibly looking at tonight is, they've submitted plans, renderings, a zoning text amendment to allow the age-qualified twin homes at this, at this property. What they're asking for is to start the process to allow other departments to review those plans in that zoning text amendment. So what has to happen is, we need to send those to the Bucks County Planning Commission, and our own Township Planning Commission, to review those. And they give their comments on them. And the Township Planning Commission is a public meeting, which, if it does occur, it'll be on December, Wednesday, December 1st, that the public is absolutely allowed to come out and make more comments at that time, when the Planning Commission would review, review everything. They're asking us just to start that, so we can get the other entities involved to look at the, look at what they're proposing.
Right. Now, do you know what they're planning on doing at this hearing on December 20th?
December 20th, their hope is that the Planning Commissions have reviewed that zoning text amendment, and can give a recommendation to the board, and the board could possibly, that they're asking that the board could possibly vote on it at that, there's no, nothing that says that they will, that's what they're asking for.
Okay, so this is definitely, they're definitely trying to fast-track this whole process. Okay, as long as we're informed, I'm okay with, for them fast-tracking it.
Yes, and that's, but that's actually what they're asking for, because it'll be formal notices that get sent out, you know, as required by the subdivision land development ordinance, zoning ordinance. So it'll go to the, the Township Planning Commission, that everyone here is allowed to come out and review, as well as the Planning Commission reviews all the plans on that zoning amendment.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Did you mention a December 1st meeting as well?
That's the, the December 1st is the Township Planning Commission meeting. It would be, it would, yes, yes, it is a public meeting that everyone can come to, and that would be here.
The Township Planning Commission meets the first Wednesday of each month?
Yeah.
If there is plans provided, so that agenda hasn't been set yet, but that's what they're requesting.
It's so important you can ask these, just like Kenny said, in an afternoon, a lot of the way.
They wouldn't be on that agenda until the results of tonight. They, they wouldn't be on that agenda until the results of tonight's request.
Yeah, I mean, it's a process...
The agenda hasn't been set.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll end as I started. I started by asking and advising, as I did, that we're having a neighbor meeting here next Monday at 7:00 PM. Spread the word. We're going to spread the word. We hope that the neighbors here spread the word. We're looking for as many people as possible next Monday night. We're then going to the Planning Commission, as I said earlier, on December 1st. Spread the word. We're looking for as many people and input as we can get, and dialogue, and then we're formally asking that the process be started on the 20th, by allowing us to send out all these legal notices, send out and disseminate the information to the Planning Commission, the county that is, and we'll start to receive review letters. We all come back here on the 20th, and it's up to the board how they want to proceed from there, but at least the process will be started.
Thank you, Mr. Gunlock. So, Mr. Esposito, what's our next step?
If the board is inclined to do so, it could make a motion to authorize me to send the zoning text amendment and the plans to the county and township Planning Commissions for review.
This is...
It is a vote to send, to send these documents to the Planning Commissions for review, as we just, just discussed. It's not a vote to approve anything, it's just to send them out for review.
But, they're going to vote right now, to say whether...
Can you, can you please come to the microphone? People need to hear you.
Elaine Miles, 217 Stony Brook Court. So my understanding is, you're going to vote to move this along if you think this is, what has been presented is coherent? Is that what you're...
I don't believe that's what we're voting on.
Okay, so then I'm not clear.
You're voting to send this, send the documents that have been discussed tonight, and that will be discussed next Monday night, to the Township and County Planning Commissions, just to get their comments on them as well, that can be sent back.
I get that. So, they're voting on whether to send it forward to get other people's comments?
Yes.
And in order to do that, they have to have reached a conclusion that this is coherent? Otherwise, they wouldn't move it forward, right?
I, I mean...
I mean, isn't that what you do? You say, you look at something, say, okay, logically, this looks like something that is ready for the next step. Isn't that what you're doing right now? You're seeing it's ready for the next step?
Not necessarily. It provides them with the information. They'll have the information when they are faced with the decision. The input from the Planning Commission, and the input from the County Planning Commission. They're not making a decision now, except to get feedback and input from those two bodies.
I understand. And in order to ask them for feedback from the two bodies, they have to conclude that this has been fairly coherent.
Ms. Miles, I think you're making an assumption about what we are each thinking that is unfair, and beyond the bounds of the vote that we're being asked to take right now. We are being asked to get the expert...
I'm just trying to get clear.
Excuse me. We're being asked, we're asking for the expert opinion of the various boards and commissions that have the experts on them to review these documents. That's it. We need more input, because we are all laypeople as well.
Oh, I see.
We send the documents that this petitioner is asking us to potentially vote on in six weeks, five weeks, so that we can get the comments, so that we have all the input necessary to determine if it's coherent.
And, and so when you, if you agree, okay, let's go get more expert opinions from these other two commissions, do they meet in public, these other two, that he mentioned?
Yes.
They do.
And what will, assuming that you're going to say, okay, go to the next, go to get more input, when are the dates specifically, so we can all know?
December 1st. December 1st.
December 1st is which commission?
The Township's Planning Commission.
Township, can somebody write that down, because I might not remember? Township Planning Commission is December 1st.
And this is, this is available on the township's website.
Right, okay, okay. And then you mentioned another body, you mentioned two.
The County Planning Commission, and we meet the first Wednesday of the month.
So, but you guys again?
No, it's at the county.
Huh?
It's at the, it's at the county level.
It's at the county level.
In Doylestown.
It's in Doylestown.
It's in Doylestown. So, again...
Tom is on that board.
I, I chair that board, and they do it through Zoom, too. You could, so you didn't have to travel to do it.
I just want to get real clear, okay?
But...
That meeting I want to be at, so when is the date?
Uh, whatever that first Wednesday is, I don't have my...
December 1st.
That would be December 1st as well.
Okay.
Okay, so you're going to have two meetings December 1st that are crucial, and we can't be in two places at one time.
Well, the County Planning Commission meets at 2:00 in the afternoon.
Okay, everybody, did you hear that? We have a 2:00 meeting on December 1st, here?
No.
No, that's the...
At Doylestown, and we have a 7:00 meeting here, on December 1st. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, is there a motion?
If I understand it correctly, I will make a motion to send the proposed text amendment to both the Middletown Township and Bucks County Planning Commissions for review.
Second.
Seeing a motion and a second, is there any board questions? I, I will make a comment that, I, I'm voting no on this. I, I cannot support this. And I'm really not, I'm really not looking for, like applause, I really ain't. I just, I don't believe that, that it, we're ready for this in our community. And I'm going to stick to that, and I just want to let yous know that I, I will be voting no on this. Seeing a motion and a second, is there any other board questions? Any public questions?
Mr. Mooney on Zoom did raise his hand again.
On this motion?
Yes.
So, this is in regards to the two conservation district properties? Are they going to be...
Mr. Mooney, I, I have to, we're in the middle of a motion and a second. If you have a comment on the motion, we'll allow you to speak. Otherwise, the questions and the comments will be reserved until Monday night. We are finished with the, the comment part of this.
Okay, I, I was trying to ask that before, sorry.
Okay. Seeing a motion and a second, and no other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed. Ayes have it, four to one. Okay, moving, moving on to number six. Can, you want to... Oh, okay. Well, why don't we, we'll take like a, maybe a five-minute break, just so if people want to leave, so we can move on to the next agenda items.
That's a big video. Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to number six, consideration of preliminary final land development approval, Chick-fil-A Langhorne Square, 1501 East Lincoln Highway, Langhorne, PA, 19047, TMP number 22-047-011-002, see commercial zoning S/LD 20-70.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Tyler Prime of the firm of Prime &amp; Tuvell, on behalf of the applicant. Just by way of procedural history, we first received our zoning variances in the summer of 2020, I think it was June, and then we went to the planning commission. We appeared before the planning commission three separate times in this year, 2021. We were there in April, August, and then October. In between and before those meetings, there was a series of other meetings amongst your towns' professionals and ours as well. We made some plan tweaks. We tried to accommodate as best we could requests mainly related to traffic. I think at this point, we have a letter from your traffic engineer that we're okay with. We can comply with everything in the letter and everything else. I mean, I'll give you a background on the site. I'll have our engineer go over the site briefly, just to explain what we're doing, what we're proposing, so you can see it, and the changes that we've made through the course of our submission over the past 18 months or so. And from there, we can take any questions the board may have, or your professionals may have, and we'd ask for a vote at that point. I have Justin Thornton with Colliers Engineering &amp; Design, he's our engineer, to give you a background and overview on the site.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Justin Thornton with Colliers Engineering &amp; Design. I'm a licensed civil engineer. I'm here also to represent Chick-fil-A, the applicant. I'll try and just give you a brief overview, and if you guys have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer any of them. Real quick up here, I don't know if everyone's familiar where the site is actually located. This is a shopping center with floor and decor down to the bottom of the screen. The Starbucks is, I guess, almost in the center, and then there's a bank or credit union off on the right-hand side of the screen. The Chick-fil-A will be proposed in between the two and an empty parking field. And I'm going to, forgive me, I'm probably going to go to, all right, there we go. And here is our, our proposed plan for the Chick-fil-A. As you can see, we're, we're just going to remove a portion of the parking lot, which isn't really used today. Every time I'm there, it seems to be vacant. We are proposing approximately a 5,200 square foot Chick-fil-A. We have two drive-through lanes that are isolated around the building in an attempt to keep the majority of our drive-through lanes separated from customers who want to park and walk in. I indicate the drive-through, two drive-through lanes completely around the building. We have two canopies, one for, if anyone's familiar with the way Chick-fil-A operates now, we, we have the canopies to, so the team members can go outside and, and take the orders, to get the orders into the kitchen quicker, and then we actually have a canopy for the pickup window area for team members bringing out the food during busy times as well. Other than that, the, we're reutilizing all the same access points for the shopping center. We're not proposing any new or additional ones. We are, and I'm going to flip back real quick, because we made a couple changes to the plan through our different planning commission meetings. We met with staff a couple times as well, I believe. So I just want to highlight the couple changes that were made that aren't on that color rendering yet. The first one is the driveway at the, I guess, the east or the northern side of the site. That one has been realigned to be basically in line with the one across the street as well, so it's a cleaner intersection. We have also proposed a ADA compliant crosswalk and sidewalk path to get to the public sidewalk, so anybody who wants to walk to the residential neighborhood, to the shopping center, they can do that. So we did propose that, and that's on there. We did add a pedestrian path to the bus stop as well. Let's see. We've also agreed to donate, I think it was $100,000, Tyler? $100,000 for the traffic signal?
Future traffic.
Future traffic signal, in addition to whatever our, our traffic impact fee was as well, which I believe was another $48,000. And then we've also added, or proposing additional, or no parking signs up by the Starbucks. If anyone's familiar with the way that site operates today, they do park along there, and I think it was the staff requested that we add some no parking signs there, and the landlord is okay with us doing that. I mean, that, that's the extent of what we're proposing here, a, a brief overview. If anyone has any questions, we're happy to address them.
I, so you, you say there's two drive-throughs that go through there, but there's only one window, correct, that, when you get to the end?
That is correct, and it's not really a window anymore. I'm, so by habit, I'm used to calling it a window. Chick-fil-A is actually switching from using a traditional window to having a door, so their team members can walk out and deliver the food to the cars in the drive-through lane.
So, so the two lanes stay consistent as they're going?
They will stay consistent, yes.
They don't merge to go to the window?
Yes. And then what you don't see on here yet, but working with staff, we've agreed to add some additional crosswalks, I think some pedestrian crossing signs there as well, just to give a, a warning to the cars that are driving there.
So can you go back to the screen you had before here?
Uh...
That one?
Oh, the aerial? Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so your site is going to be in the far right corner, right there?
Yes.
Correct? And I, and I know, like, I've actually been at a couple of the planning meetings with my camera off, just, but just watching, and I know there's a lot of issues with traffic. And, and I understand that the traffic really isn't there, it's more in Highland Park, and I think that needs to be addressed, the Highland Park. We had a meeting with the residents of Highland Park, and I think that needs to be addressed with that. But what I see there at the Starbucks, and I'm wondering if you had any conversations with the owner of the shopping center, is that line for Starbucks is only one window, and in the morning, that line will start at the Starbucks and come all the way down to the tile place. And I was wondering or concerned that maybe with what you're proposing, if the two of yous or the shopping center could get together and maybe make it so that the line doesn't come down into the traffic, the thruway there? And there's a way that you can make it to where the traffic all stays to the one side and comes out the same way? Because right now, when Starbucks gets done giving you your coffee or your, your latte or whatever, I'm not a Starbucks guy, so I don't know what they have, but when the Starbucks gets done, that traffic can scatter anywhere in that shopping center. Where if we can stay consistent, maybe with Starbucks and with the Chick-fil-A, and traffic all flows the one way, instead of just scattering and having like, whatever, a, a mess there? If there's any, any discussion on that at all?
I know there's been quite a few discussions with the shopping center owner between Chick-fil-A and, and, like I said, the shopping center owner. I do not know if it was discussed how their, how the Starbucks drive-through works or not. I was not part of those conversations. Do you know if they were part of that? It doesn't, I don't believe they, they were discussed.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because, I mean, I know it isn't, and, like, it's the shopping center, and it isn't your, what, what you're trying to do is something different, but I'm just concerned that if cars start leaving that, that Chick-fil-A, and they start leaving that shopping center or the, or the Starbucks, they just start scattering all over the place. And, I mean, one, there could be accidents, confusion, people going back through the lines, and I, I didn't know, like, maybe, because your, your picture would come up the right side along Highland Parkway, parallel with Highland Parkway, and then you would go to the left to your pickup door or window, or whatever you're calling it, and then they go into the Starbucks right after that. They'll go right past the Starbucks, correct? When they leave?
Correct. Yes, because when we get out, our pickup window or door, as you said, is at the top of the page there, so we're directly in line with that main aisle to...
Correct, correct. And then Starbucks is the same way, but Starbucks, they don't have no, it just scatters, it seems like. They go left, they go right, they go whatever way, and if maybe the shopping center can control that in any way, so the traffic does just go one way out of that area?
Sure. I mean, that's certainly something we could ask. I know Chick-fil-A's, has ongoing discussions with the shopping center owner. We could ask them to visit that and see what the landlord's willing to do. I know the dialogue's open, so it's certainly something we could ask.
Okay. Mr. Tosti? Pardon me? To chime in on just that question. Chick-fil-A has agreed, one of our comments was, it was a will comply, is working with the shopping center and Starbucks to determine the, the best options associated with how that's all going to work. It, it's been trying with regard to the interaction between two separate shopping center owners and this shop, and, and the one where the Chick-fil-A is, to kind of coordinate everything. However, there is a condition of appro, what we would recommend is a condition of approval, if you're so deemed to approve it, that that does take place with regard to that interact, that coordination with Starbucks and the property owner. So we think we have it covered. We don't have the correct solution. We're also looking at the one where we bring the traffic further into the site, then circle back up rather than...
So there's dialogue there?
Yes, yes, we, we certainly are.
Now, can, can you go back to that last screen again? Now, the other question I have is, right past the Starbucks there, you have an exit or an entrance way, where they can go out onto the highway. Is that going to stay open, or is, does, does the shopping center have any plans of closing that to drive the traffic out to the two traffic lights instead of to that lane there?
Just quickly clarify, are you referring to the...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Again, I'll answer that, the, the, what would be a condition, again, a condition that we had put on here, was a right-turn deceleration lane into the site for the, for the Chick-fil-A. As part of that, and as part of the highway occupancy permit and the pending future traffic signal, we would recommend, along with PENDOT's permission, to restrict that driveway, to make it a right-in, right-out, where it would push that traffic that's making the left to make it more safely at the, at the new traffic.
Because that's what I was going to ask, if we can make that a right-in and a right-out, because, I mean, I think just recently, we had a motorcyclist that got killed pulling out of that, out of that intersection there, out onto the highway, and...
Right.
That's, okay.
And we will, we will coordinate with PENDOT specifically and the applicant's engineer with how that's all going to work out.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Anybody else? Okay. Are you guys done, or do you have...
That's it. I think we've beat the proverbial dead horse over the last year and a half, so if there's anything else on your end, we'll take questions, but I don't think we have anything else to offer.
So, I just, so talk to me about the traffic light. You had talked about you were putting money aside for the traffic light. Is that going to be Highland Parkway there, or where is that traffic light?
It's Highland Parkway. Yeah, it'd be, and it'd be, so basically, the issue is, is that the traffic problem, as everyone knows, exists today. So the compromise we came to was that Chick-fil-A would make a contribution to the fund, $100,000 contribution for future use, eventually, when you can get that traffic signal.
And can somebody tell me, what does a traffic light normally cost?
the shopping center and Starbucks to determine the best options associated with how that's all going to work. It's been trying with regard to the interaction between two separate shopping center owners and this shop, and the one where the Chick-fil-A is, to kind of coordinate everything. However, there is a condition of approval, what we would recommend is a condition of approval, if you're so deemed to approve it, that that does take place with regard to that coordination with Starbucks and the property owner.
Okay.
So we think we have it covered. We don't have the correct solution. We're also looking at the one where we bring the traffic further into the site, then circle back up rather than...
So there's dialogue there?
Yes, yes, we certainly are.
Now, can you go back to that last screen again? Now, the other question I have is, right past the Starbucks there, you have an exit or an entrance way, where they can go out onto the highway. Is that going to stay open, or is, does the shopping center have any plans of closing that to drive the traffic out to the two traffic lights instead of to that lane there?
Just quickly clarify, are you referring to the...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Again, I'll answer that, the, what would be a condition, again, a condition that we had put on here, was a right turn deceleration lane into the site for the Chick-fil-A. As part of that, and as part of the highway occupancy permit and the pending future traffic signal, we would recommend, along with PennDOT's permission, to restrict that driveway, to make it a right in, right out, where it would push that traffic that's making the left to make it more safely at the new traffic.
Because that's what I was going to ask, if we can make that a right in and a right out? Because, I mean, I think just recently, we had a motorcyclist that got killed pulling out of that, out of that intersection there, out onto the highway.
Right.
And that's...
And we will coordinate with PennDOT specifically and the applicant's engineer with how that's all going to work out.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Anybody else? Are you guys done, or do you have...
That's it. I think we've beat the proverbial dead horse over the last year and a half, so if there's anything else on your end, we'll take questions, but I don't think we have anything else to offer.
So talk to me about the traffic light. You had talked about you were putting money aside for the traffic light. Is that going to be Highland Parkway there, or where is that traffic light?
It's Highland Parkway. Yeah, it'd be, and it'd be, so basically, the issue is, is that the traffic problem, as everyone knows, exists today. So the compromise we came to was that Chick-fil-A would make a contribution to the fund, $100,000 contribution for future use, eventually when you can get that traffic signal.
And can somebody tell me, what does a traffic light normally cost?
That particular one would cost about $325,000.
So the township would still be putting in a good amount of the money?
Well, we also plan to be able to use impact fee money from any other developments that come in, in the area that would be applied to this. So other development that comes in would be subject to impact fees as well.
Yes, and they're going to be providing an impact fee of about $50,000 as well.
Okay.
Total contribution's around $150,000.
$150,000, okay, thank you.
Is there any other board questions? Is there a motion?
I would move to grant preliminary final land development plan for Chick-fil-A, 1501 East Lincoln Highway, S/LD number 20-70, with the following conditions: applicants shall comply in full with all requirements of the Middletown Township subdivision and land development ordinance and the Middletown Township zoning ordinance, unless relief is granted by the body having jurisdiction; two, any remaining review comments shall be addressed in full; three, the applicant shall provide funds to be placed in an escrow account with the township for the Lincoln Highway deceleration lane land development improvement work to be completed with the assistance of the township; and finally, the applicant shall contribute $100,000 toward a new traffic signal and intersection improvements at Highland Parkway and Lincoln Highway.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second. Is there any board questions? I will make a comment. I know, I've been on a lot of the meetings, and a lot of the residents from the Highland Park area and from the gates in that area, they have concerns with traffic. And I commend your patience and the work that you've done with the township and everybody to make this work. But we, as a township, really need to look and see what we can do for Highland Park to try to eliminate some of that traffic, because that's where the traffic is coming from, there. The shopping center and Chick-fil-A took a beating on this, and I'm going to apologize for that on behalf of them, because, I mean, it's not something that you could control. But I think that we need to, as a township moving forward, to seriously address the problems there in Highland Park, so...
I fully agree with Mr. Tosti. I think we still owe the Highland Park residents more.
Absolutely.
And that shouldn't fall on the shoulders of the last one in, right? And so I definitely agree with your comments. I know there are conversations ongoing about how to remedy the traffic within Highland Park, and those will continue.
Yep. Any other board questions? Any public questions? You got it. Mr. McDonald?
Hi, good evening, folks. Tom McDonald from Highland Park. Question, I noticed up here, if you could put that last picture up of the diagram of the shopping center from the sky. There it is. If you'll notice up there, I would assume you gentlemen will be cutting some trees down for the new store, for the Chick-fil-A store. What is your plans as far as landscaping to replace those?
Two, maybe I'm going to switch. Oh, sorry about that. I'm not sure if I'm doing something wrong, or... I mean, if you just want to put up the two, the color rendering of the site, that'll...
That's a pretty good shot.
There we go. I just wanted to point this out, so you could kind of see where we're adding landscape, because currently, there are some strips of, I'll call it landscaping there, where there's a couple trees in them. But for the most part, it's a sea of asphalt. If you can see here, we're actually taking out a lot of that asphalt. We are adding, everything here in green is going to be landscaped. There's landscaped around the perimeter of our site, there's landscaped around our building, we're adding some additional landscaped islands in, and there will be a mixture of trees, shrubs, flowers, you know, the mix.
The reason, the reason I bring this up here, that is very well planned as far as, there's two different shopping center owners. But I go back a lot, a lot of years. That was the former two guys' store there. Those trees that you guys are going to be cutting down, they're really formed, really good trees, and you can notice. The trees that are in front of Red Nurse, the owner that came in years and years ago, cut down the Levittown trees, which were gorgeous, just went in there one day. Even the township was shocked by it. The guy just came in there and just destroyed everything. When the new owners came in years later, they planted the trees they have in there now, and they're terrible. You take a look at the difference between the trees that you guys are going to be cutting down and the trees that are down there. They've really been formed and really, you know, look attractive up there. If you could plant the same type of trees around the new Chick-fil-A there that you'll be cutting down, it'd make a world of difference, because you'll see, it's much better as far as the trees that are in front of bobs and in front of the tile place there. So something to keep in consideration. If it turns out as well as the picture is, it looks like a million bucks. So, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Sir, did you have a... Please state your name and your address.
Robert Notaro, Swan Point. Is anybody familiar with the Chick-fil-A in Newtown at dinnertime? That traffic backs up almost to the bypass, where it goes into Tyler Park. What are they proposing to do with all that line of traffic here? You're talking about at least a quarter mile of traffic.
I mean, that's something they're going to answer. I know this is the same owner that's over at Sesame Place trying to come over here. And one of the things is to alleviate all the buildup over there, over there by Sesame Place, and have them kind of push it over there a little bit. But I'll let them answer that question.
That is a very good question. I am familiar with that site. I've eaten there myself before.
Yeah, it's hard to get through there.
Too many milkshakes. You're correct. It is extremely busy. That shopping center, it does back out onto the main road there. Part of that challenge is, once our drive-through lane, when it backs out of our site, it's pretty much the main entrance of that center, so everything else gets blocked by it.
Can you show me where, like, if you had a line, where it would go?
Sure. Well, I'll get to that in a second, till I can show you that. But there are some key differences between that Newtown, I apologize, I got to be closer, to the Newtown location and this location. The Newtown one, it's an older restaurant. It doesn't have the dual drive-through lane option there. It's a single drive-through lane around it.
So it's got three?
Not where the pickup is.
Oh, yeah.
Correct. It does narrow down, and that is a, we've learned through COVID, that's actually a big impact to the, to what we can get through there. So that's the difference. This one also has all the, a bigger kitchen inside, even though that building's probably about a 5,000 square building. I don't remember exactly, it's been a long time since I looked at that plan, but this is a slightly larger building, but we also have less seats and a bigger kitchen. So every iteration, Chick-fil-A is getting a bigger and bigger kitchen in there to process that food quicker. So we have that, we have the dual drive-through lanes, we have the canopies for the team members to work under. So that all helps make it more efficient and get the customers through the site better. Now, on this particular plan, we've looked at a handful of different options. I'm blocking everybody here, I feel like... So we've looked at a handful of different options, and pretty much, our pickup window's at the top, so we do circle the entire building with our dedicated drive-through lane, before we even overflow into the shopping center. And then we did look at different options, whether it made sense, and this is one thing that the traffic engineer, the township traffic engineer was referring to, that those will be ongoing conversations. If things need to improve, because let's say, Kurt, let's say in the beginning, we stacked the cars up on our site and then come out around and down. If it seems to work better to modify it after the fact, we will. That's one of those ongoing conversations that was being referred to. But that's what I would envision happening at first. Probably would come up, and then you have this whole drive-off first, so... I mean, you could store quite a few cars, especially before you get to a roadway, or even impacting floor and decor or Starbucks.
Is there any other public comment? I know we have one on Zoom, correct?
Yes, I'll bring them in now.
Hi. I just want, I think the Chick-fil-A design is great.
Can you please state your name and your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Angeline Dougherty. I live at 1539 Old Lincoln Highway in Lyman. I think the Chick-fil-A design is great, and I think a lot of the stuff you guys talked about tonight is great, but my concern with a lot of these drive-throughs is that you picked up your meal, you're enjoying your meal, and the next thing you do is you pitch it all out the door of your car as you drive by my house on Old Lincoln Highway. And I have collected multiple bags of trash from all these drive-throughs, and I appreciate that people want to have their fast meal. But is there anything that we can do to put this on the township's radar, that some of these fast food places, you know, they're not taking care of their trash, I am? And then the township is inevitably, because it's in my trash can. But that's my only concern, is the amount of trash that I have to pick up off my front lawn and all my neighbors' front lawns, because they don't pitch it in the parking lot, they pick it, pitch it in front of my house. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know what to say to that. I'll be perfectly honest with you. I feel sorry for you that you're dealing with that. And I wish our world wasn't one where people just threw the trash out the window, but it's something that we live in as a society, and I don't know how to fix that, or I would. Any other public comment? Good, Tommy.
I live on Country Lane. I've worked with these gentlemen at last, I'm a member of the planning commission. So could you put the one picture up that has the arrows and everything, the new rendering? Okay. So I was at tile and decor applied around the rest of the week.
Tom, Tom, Tommy, Tom, can you use the microphone at least? You can point, there's a microphone right there.
I have a loud voice.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. So I've noticed that a lot of people, like Tom was mentioning, they come out of the drive-through and they rush down here. So I was wondering if, this is just an idea, and you guys can do what you like to do, if you can re-line this and turn it this way, you could possibly cut off some of this traffic that's trying to get, I mean, it's almost like a constant flow. And I know you're trying to use these two lanes, or this lane, as your overflow if you have to. All you have to do is basically is take this arrow out and make, and you're going to force this traffic to go this way, as you're talking about with, working with, so you don't have the cars meeting each other right here, coming out of here and coming out of here, so these guys can come this way.
See, I think that's what I was trying to say, and Mr. Worster said that they're in discussions with that. The problem that, I'm going to, I'm going to speak on their behalf, the problem is, is that they can't control the shopping center. And that's where you have to open it up to discussions with the owner of the shopping center to try to control that. And Mr. Worster has said that there is discussions ongoing for that.
And I don't want to wave my hands, Tommy, and say, oh, don't worry, everything's going to be okay. But I am encouraged that, you know, we don't have a lot of control, as you know, about what, who applies to, you know, building our township, but it is evident that Chick-fil-A tends to be a good neighbor and a good corporate citizen, and they don't want their customers sitting in endless lines, any more than my kids want to sit in their endless line. So I have confidence that if there is a situation like that, they're going to do what they can to make it move faster and smoother. No, you're right on.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Ayes have it, 4-1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you.
All right, moving on to number seven, consideration of awarding a contract with Golden Incorporated Building Maintenance in the amount of $40,560 for the cleaning services for the Police Department Administration and Public Works offices. Ms. Thiele-Coles?
Thank you very much. We released bids for cleaning of our municipal buildings back in August. We did a walkthrough and a bid opening in late fall. We had four bidders for this contract. The lowest bidder is Golden Incorporated from Ben Salem. The total cost annually is $40,560. We do have $40,000 in the proposed budget for this, and we did check the references of the low bidder. This is not a company that we have utilized in the past, but they do have good references, so we are recommending that we authorize the contract for cleaning services for 2022 and beyond.
Is there any questions for Ms. Thiele-Coles? Huh? Oh.
Good evening, Mr. Tosti and board members. I just want to take a few minutes. I know that Golden is the low bidder. Genevieve Barker Cleaning Services, who came in second to Golden, has been cleaning the Police Department now for almost two years. I don't, I know how bidding services work, and I know that Golden is likely going to get the award, because they came in a few thousand dollars lower. I do want to speak on behalf of Genevieve and the phenomenal job that she did in coming to the Police Department when COVID hit, and it was really to do some extra cleaning for COVID, but what wound up happening, she may not have realized that the township was basically paying AccuClean for a number of years and getting almost nothing in return. Kind of showed what a true cleaning service should be. I would, I would ask that the board would give consideration to Genevieve Barker Cleaning Services, since she is a known commodity to us. I have nothing against Golden, I don't know Golden. I did reach out to one of Golden's references, Trenton Police Department, and the sergeant I spoke to there, she gave them a very good recommendation. They no longer have them, because they got outbid at Trenton Police. I just want to speak on behalf of Jenna. She's been cleaning for us now for almost two years. Didn't know her before she started, I only know her because she cleans for us now. And I did promise her that I would let you, the Board of Supervisors, know what a good job she does for us, and that hopefully you might take that into consideration when awarding this bid. The difference is very minimal. I understand it's a difference, and I understand that every taxpayer dollar is very important, very precious, understand that. But it is a very minimal difference for what is a known commodity that has done a fantastic job cleaning, to move to a cleaning service that comes with very good recommendations, but we don't, we've never had experience with them.
I think we'd all love to go with the second low bidder, but obviously, we can't. We're forced to go with the low bidder.
Okay, if we're forced...
Because we were not, there's no reason to disqualify them.
Right, right.
And the law is very clear in this regard. If we, if we had the choice to go to Genevieve, I would have been recommending that to you.
Well, do we have the opportunity to go back with a counteroffer?
Nope, not in public bidding, you don't.
See, I was going to say, I've heard nothing but good things about Genevieve. And she did a fantastic job during the pandemic. The staff was very, very appreciative of what they did. From what I understand, and what she did at the Police Department was an outstanding job, and, and Chief, your word always means something to me whenever you speak, and you know that. I do wonder, and I think Ms. Thiele-Coles answered my question, if we could do that and take that, but I don't think we're...
If the chief's reference from the Trenton Police Department was a bad reference, that would have been an opportunity, but unfortunately, we got a good reference from them, from him and others.
Now, these contracts were five years? Three years or five?
It actually says one year with the option of three years. So my question was going to be if we could rebid it after a year and give everyone an opportunity to resubmit. Is that legal?
I mean, I would love nothing more than to give her the work. Everyone has great, great things to say about her, no problem. If we could, if I could be recommending her and stay within the law, I would.
I, and that's what I was wondering, is how long, and if there's an escape clause, if she doesn't live up to what...
Of course, of course, of course. And if you want to make the motion for it to be a one-year contract, to be rebid, again this time next year, I'm happy to do it.
Chief, I thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the few minutes, I know it's been a long meeting. I just wanted to say a few things.
And again, your word means everything. I mean, I've had a good relationship with you, and I've never had any reason to doubt anything you ever said, so, but I think our hands are tied on this.
That's fine. I hear good things about Golden, so hopefully they work out, but thanks for hearing me out, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.
I defer to the continuing board members, I don't want to tie their hands about the one-year contract.
I'm happy to make a motion to authorize a contract with Golden Inc. Building Maintenance for one year in the amount of $40,560 for cleaning services for township buildings.
I'll second.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any questions on the motion?
Do we need to rewrite something in there that...
Do we need to rewrite something in there that takes out that option for the three year?
No, I would say no because we made the motion for one year.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, five, nothing. Moving on to number eight, consideration of authorizing the purchase of one twenty twenty-one BA one hundred, one eighteen C hydraulic angle broom skid steer attachment for a total of five thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty cents. Mr. Gartmire?
Good evening, board members. So we looked at this attachment before. We're going to use this when we do construction jobs. It's actually a broom type that is attachment for the skid steer. We would like to purchase this, just like I said, to help out with various jobs. And we were thinking about even if it could help in the wintertime with the light snow, that we could use it for that also. So that's the reasoning for, as it, as it says in your packet memo.
So my question, I thought we purchased one of these like about a year or two ago, the broom for the skid steer.
No, we did not. It was put off. At the time, we couldn't get it. It was during COVID, actually.
Okay, all right.
Everything I put on hold, so.
Okay, I knew we had talked about it.
Yes, we, we did in the past, yes, we have.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Gartmire? Is there a motion?
I'll move to authorize the purchase of one twenty twenty-one BA one one eight C hydraulic angle broom skid steer attachment from Folly Inc. of Piscotti, New Jersey, for the total of five thousand dollars, two hundred and forty-nine, forty cents.
I'll second. Seeing a motion and a second, any board questions? Any public questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, five, zero. Let's sit there, Mr. Gartmire, because the next one is consideration of authorizing the purchase of one twenty twenty-two John Deere Gator XUV eight six five M HVAC, M1 Western seven four three six zero seventy-two inch V plow and V box spreader for a total of thirty-five thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. Mr. Gartmire?
All right, so this machine is actually not used just in the wintertime, but also summertime doing maintenance at the fields and stuff, at the different parks and everything like that. Also, you know, sometimes we have to get back in the woods and places that we can't get vehicles or even our larger equipment. So that was another reason for getting it, to get back to creek areas when we got to take stuff out of creeks and stuff like that. Just to let you know, we have a total of forty-four walking paths that we take care of in the wintertime, that's after we get done snow plow and everything. And there are a total of six bridges that we actually take care of in the wintertime also. So this would help us in that effort to take care of that. Not only that, but all the park and the paths going through the parks.
I, I actually, I saw pictures of this and, and it's going to be used for the walking paths in the park because I know we purchased, what was it, like about four or five years ago for the parks, and it's harder for that. This seems like this would make it a little bit easier for you guys.
Probably about, it's been longer than that, probably about seven, eight years ago, we did buy a, it's called a Gator. It, it's, it's not, it was something that we got that we were kind of forced to take, I guess. It, it's not really made for what we do. On the light snow, yes, it will work, I'm, I'm not going to sit here and say it doesn't. But if you get a couple inches of snow, forget it, you might as well just park it and forget about it.
Yeah, I, I kind of liked the V plow too, I didn't know what the usage of that was for.
Yeah, I mean, the new one will have a V plow on it also, which will help the snow, and it comes also with a spreader to spread salt as we do the parking lots.
Does anybody have any questions?
Can this be used to pull a couch out of a creek?
Yeah, if we can get to it, yeah.
Apparently there's a couch in the creek. A resident just mentioned that during the Stone Farm debate, so.
Oh, what they're referring to is all the stuff from the Millhouse at the corner of Bridgetown. That is all their stuff that floated down. And yes, it is, it is there, yes. Along with their cushions and everything else.
You didn't answer her question, can we pull it out with this?
Yeah, you can, actually, there is a winch on it.
So I'll move to authorize the purchase of one twenty twenty-two John Deere Gator XUV eight six five M HVAC and one Western seven four three six seventy-two inch V plow and V box spreader from Deere, from Deere and Company of Cary, North Carolina, for a total of thirty-five thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents.
I'll second.
Seeing a motion and a second. The only question I have is in the packet here, it talks about Littles. So why, why are we getting it from North Carolina?
That, that is the main branch. Littles is actually, there, there is a one in.
Happer.
Happer. That's who we're dealing with. And also, I, I didn't explain this to you, but it's under Pennsylvania AG, which is agriculture, that's what this falls under. So it's like the co-stars of Pennsylvania for farm equipment. Is what it is.
Any other board questions? Any public questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, four, zero.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, consideration of advertising ordinance to make the intersection of Parkview Avenue and Buttonwood Avenue an always stop. Mr. Valor?
Good evening, board. So the Citizens Traffic Commission was reviewing a resident concern in the neighborhood of Langhorne Gables along Parkview. While there was no action needed on that specific issue while we were in the neighborhood, we did discover this one-way stop sign on Parkview, which those who aren't familiar, Parkview is the through street. And so as you can kind of see, it's a little bit unconventional, but our police department pointed that out plainly. So what you're seeing here on the screen is a one-way stop on the through street of Parkview. But there is no stop sign coming from the opposite direction, nor from the residential or the cut ending street on Buttonwood. And so what we are recommending is turning this into an all-way stop, which is kind of what naturally a motorist would expect, because it's highly unusual to see a one-way stop on a through, on the through street. And then also what we are planning to do or recommending to the board through the same ordinance, so for those who don't know, stop signs are all authorized via township ordinance. Again, while we were in the neighborhood, we discovered a lot of the stop signs that are already in place throughout Langhorne Gables aren't actually properly memorialized in our township ordinances. And so while we are already making this change to our stop sign ordinance for this one-stop sign in Langhorne Gables, we are recommending memorializing those other, there's about seventeen of them, in the rest of Langhorne Gables. So the only, so for the residents listening, the only new stop sign would be at Buttonwood and Parkview, changing it from the one-way as it is today to an all-way. Everything else that would be in the same proposed ordinance as we're recommending would just be memorializing what's already there.
So you're just changing the language to reflect what actually exists?
Yeah, and the important point that for the police department, that actually gives them the proper enforcement power to properly enforce those stop signs when there is a violation. And in many cases, those signs have been there for decades, but when they were put up once upon a time, they just did not go through the proper channel at the time.
It just needs to have an ordinance.
It's housekeeping.
Any other questions for?
I move to authorize the township solicitor to draft and advertise an ordinance amending Chapter 470 of the Middletown Township Code of Ordinances to designate the intersection of Parkview and Buttonwood Avenues as an always stop and to memorialize the existing stop signs in the Langhorne Gables neighborhood.
Second. Seeing a motion and a second, is there any board questions? Any public questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, four, zero. Next on the agenda is the twenty twenty-two budget presentation, Ms. Tealie Coles.
Good evening. In light of the fact that it is nearly ten PM, I promise to take it easy on you and go through this quickly. I will, just for those who are watching the airing that is replayed later, everything that I'm talking about tonight will be on our website. So I'm pleased to present to you the twenty twenty-two proposed budget. Just as a, a starting point, this time last year when we were budgeting, we were a little concerned, you know, we didn't know what was going to happen. Twenty twenty-one ended up being better than expected, I think because we entered the COVID-19 crisis in a sound position with strong cash reserves. And then really what happened, most importantly, is we did have a strong rebound in our revenue sources. We had an influx of revenue from both COVID-19 reimbursements as well as the, the Recovery Plan Act, two-point-three million this year, and we will receive two-point-three million next year. And so, because the year was better than expected, we did not need to transfer the one-point-one million from the investment fund to the general fund. We're proposing a budget tonight that has no proposed tax increase. For an overview, our overall operating expenses, just over thirty-nine million, proposed capital expenses, eight-point-three million. One of the things we talk about, and I, I just realized I don't have any of my notes, so I'm totally flying by the seat of my pants right now. One of the things we talk about each year is really trying to keep the general fund balance, the revenues and the expenditures. We use this slide as a way to show how hard it is to influence general fund expenditures. If you see, this is a list of all of our expenditure categories, and those top four represent eighty-eight percent, that's salaries and benefits. So we do try to keep a tight rein on our expenditures. Fund balances, you'll see right at the bottom of this chart, more than sixty-one million dollars in fund balances right now, forty-four million of that is from the investment fund. Our general fund revenues, expenditures, and fund balance, I'm just going to see if this helps. No. So you have here an interesting slide that depicts on the bottom, the bar chart shows you our fund balance, and then you have the expenditures versus revenues. And so you can see those years, I'm not sure if I had, you can see these years after the EIT implementation that we were able to put some of that money into our fund balances. You can see twenty twenty here, where we have a deficit, and then twenty twenty-one, where our revenues rebounded. But one, one of the things we always keep our eyes on is just as those revenues and expenditures come together so that we can keep track to make sure that our expenses are now not outpacing our revenues. Some of the critical details for this budget, we continue to aggressively seek grant revenue. We've received more than nine-point-one million dollars since we started keeping track in two thousand and eleven. We continue to invest in our infrastructure, long-term capital planning, municipal insurance pooling has been very helpful to us, our insure, our medical insurance renewal with the Delaware Valley Health Insurance Trust is one-point-one-four percent. That's just changing everything in our last two years budget. When we were out in the commercial market with Blue Cross, we were looking at, you know, double digits up to twenty percent plus each year. One of the other critical roles is the evolving role that the township is playing in fire response. We did a fire study this year, fire services study, and so that is a, an issue that we are looking at in twenty twenty-two. This budget contemplates moving to the strategic planning stage. And also, the general obligation bond that we did this year helped us to save in about two-hundred-and-sixty thousand in future interest costs. Couple of the recognitions we typically talk about, we're, you know, not to just beat a dead horse, but we're very proud of these things. The Distinguished Budget Award, we've received three years in a row. Our GFOA Financial Reporting Award, we hope to be in our seventeenth year. And when we did that bond issue this year, we did get the AAA bond rating for the second year in a row. We talked about this in September, but this shows you our pension obligation for both our police and our non-uniformed personnel. We are currently a hundred and twelve full-time, twenty-three part-time, seventy-three seasonal. We have one collective bargaining agreement that we are negotiating now. The other three all call for three-and-a-half percent increases in wages. In twenty twenty-two, this budget incorporates filling any vacant positions, there are currently four vacant positions. General fund highlights, oh goodness, what am I doing here, Nick? There we go. General fund highlights, we're a balanced budget, revenues versus expenditures there. Our revenues, as you can see in that chart, the largest piece of pie, the yellow piece of pie, is our earned income tax, followed closely by, excuse me, real estate taxes at sixteen percent. And then, you know, a variety of items, transfer tax, public safety, intergovernmental revenue. So it's a nice, good, balanced chart of revenues. Our millage is at seventeen-point-five-seven mils, it's been there for a number of years. Our real estate tax, the average assessment is twenty-nine thousand four-ten, and that equates to an average tax of five-hundred-and-seventeen dollars. That's always something that's very hard for residents to really grasp, since they're paying so much more in their real estate taxes. The township's portion is a, a fraction of the overall real estate tax that residents pay. Some of our other taxes, amusement tax, EIT, local services tax, mercantile, parking transaction per capita, and real estate transfer, I'm just going to talk about them quickly here. You can see the, the dip here in twenty twenty in amusement tax. And again, strong rebound for twenty twenty-one, we anticipate that will continue in twenty twenty-two, that's all Sesame Place. Our EIT in twenty twenty-one, wow, we did not expect to be getting up to eight-point-four million. We're just going to keep a close watch on that. We thought these, we thought this was the peak year and that we were going to level off, but here we are, increasing again, as we mentioned in the workshops, that could be folks that are Philadelphia workers who are now working here in the community, and that might change moving forward, so we'll keep a close watch on that. Our mercantile tax, again, you see the dip, but the, the revenues are rebounding. Real estate transfer is just off the hook right now. It's insane what's going on with real estate, and so you see our revenues are pretty high. Gosh, the last real estate transfer tax report we got was over three-hundred thousand dollars in one month. I'm expecting that the November and December reports will continue to be strong. General fund expenditures, a very typical pie chart for us, police costs fifty-one percent, public works, eight percent, the IT is in a lower amount, another big chunk is employer-paid benefits. Again, this is typical, what we usually see in this category. Some highlight, highlights from our other funds, our fire protection and ambulance fund, we do provide just sort of a pass-through for the real estate taxes that come in, in those two funds. We do, we have, this will be the third year that we're budgeting for the volunteer firefighter incentive. And also, as directed during the budget workshops, we do have a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar transfer from the investment fund to the fire service or fire protection fund so that we will, so that we are recognizing that there may be costs associated with implementing that study. Parks and Recreation Fund is another operating fund, one-point-three million this year. Our sanitation fund, we're going into year three of our five-year contract. If you'll recall, we took the total cost and spread it out, so our residents will not see an increase during the entire contract. Capital Fund, we talked about in one of our recent meetings, we have a very ambitious plan. plan for 2022, 8.3 million across all of our categories and all of our departments. The Investment Fund, you all know that this fund is limited, that it may not go below 40 million. It has, in the history of the township, been utilized for emergency transfers to keep the general fund balanced. The beginning fund balance in 2022 is 44.98. Even with the two transfers that we're programming for this fund to go to capital and to fire protection, we do anticipate that it will remain in excess of 44 million at the end of 2022. Highway aid, this is the liquid fuels tax fund, 1.4 million, and we are limited by what we can do in that fund, which is mostly roadworks, snow removal, street signs. Budget process, just to sort of wrap up here tonight, as you know, we started the process in September. In October, we presented to the board and the public the capital plan. We had two workshops. Tonight, we'll kick off the public inspection period. We'll advertise the budget two times, and it will be available for you to consider adoption on December 6. We have to adopt it before the end of the year. Finally, I, just at this time, always like to recognize the staff for their hard work. We really have a great team. All of our department directors do a great job, working with our finance director, Mega Bondori. You know, a day like today, when we're putting the document together, it's just a true joy to work in this building where, you know, all hands are on deck, and, you know, you literally have anybody and everybody helping to punch holes and put documents together. So that's all I have. Thank you to the board. I think, you know, it's a solid spending plan, and look forward to helping you to implement it. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Ms. Teoli Coles. I'd also like to commend the staff here at the township for the work they do to keep us under budget, so that we don't have to raise taxes on our residents, and we can continue to keep our township moving forward with the projects that we have and the things that we do, along with the capital projects and everything. So that's a comment. If anybody else has any comments, they're welcome.
If I could just, I'm sorry, if I could just say, I really should recognize Nick, our Nick Valli, our assistant manager. You know, the budget award and this document is, is sort of his child. He takes, he takes real care in, in helping us to, to keep it to the high standards that we set a couple years ago.
If we have to recognize you, we will recognize you, Nick.
Grudgingly, no. No, I was just going to say, since this will be my, my last budget to consider, I have six of these now, sitting in a filing cabinet in my office, and, you know, their, their dispensation is unknown at this point. But it's amazing to me, and I don't know if you feel this way, Tom, to look at, just looking at the document, at how much more clear and professional and easy to digest and descriptive about the community. It's got our, like, more modern revised branding. It really encompasses, just in the look and feel of it, everything we've been working for, for the last six years. Not to mention what's inside of it, in terms of the spending plan, really reflects, I think, the priorities that we've been driving for. The Climate Action Plan, the Comprehensive Plan, our Parks and Rec Plan, all these plans coming together and being budgeted for the future. It's, to me, it's exciting, and I know how much hard work you, Nick, and you, Mega, and definitely you, Stephanie, put into this, as well as all the department heads. It is a true joy to be able to sit in a year that has been difficult for everyone and see good news on the financial front, and have the opportunity to spend money on things that are important to this board. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Any other comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to advertise the proposed 2022 budget.
I'll second.
So there's a motion and a second on the proposal. Is there any board questions? Any public questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, four-zero. Moving on to other business. Mr. Wurst? Mr. Wurst, do you have any comments? Mr. Kessler?
Nothing further, thank you.
Mr. Esposito?
Just to announce that the, the board held an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personnel matters.
Ms. Teoli Coles?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Kezak?
Nothing.
Ms. Strauss?
Yes, I have several items that will take 45 minutes or so.
Ms. Quirrell?
I just wanted to thank everybody for their hard work on the budget. I know it was a tremendous undertaking, especially in the year we, we are coming out of. So great job. And I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Ms. Quirrell. And, and the only thing I would like to just remind everybody about is our Shop With A Cop. If you can consider donating, I read it at the beginning, it's a good program, and it helps the kids in our community. This, where Officer Robinson does a fabulous job with that, along with the rest of the police department. And if you're not doing anything on December 5, join us at Target. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.